Okay, I'd like to call a meeting to order. Treasurer Simpson's not here tonight, so I'll lead the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Mr. Hilton, give us some good news.
All right, thank you, President Lewis, trustees, good evening. Give me just a second here to pull up tonight's good news. All right, jumping in and starting off this evening, trustees, I know you know this because I told you late last week, but it's been announced that as rated by the U.S. News and World Report, Tecumseh High School has once again been named one of America's best high schools. And when compared to other high schools in the state of Michigan, Tecumseh actually ranks in about the top 7% of high schools in the state of Michigan. I've gotten some questions about the methodology that's used to make these assessments. It's quite lengthy, but essentially it's around college readiness, which is a measure of the percentage of 12th graders who took and passed AP and IB or IB exams. Curriculum or college curriculum breadth, which evaluates how many 12th graders took AP and/or IB exams across multiple subject areas. State assessment proficiencies, which is essentially a measure of how well students perform on state standardized tests. State assessment performance, which actually then compares those results to the test scores that are predicted based on demographics. So, for example, since student poverty strongly can correlate with test performance, this measures which schools exceed expectations given their student population characteristics. And graduation rates, which essentially tracks the percentage of students who enter ninth grade and graduate four years later. So, all that to say, we are in the top 7% in the state of Michigan, correct? Congratulations to the students, the staff, and families who partnered together to make Tecumseh High School an exceptional place for kids. Next up tonight, trustees, on another note, I know you know this one as well, but I want to say congratulations to our incredible Michigan Art Education Association Secondary Art Teacher of the Year Jackie Whitley. Jackie, congratulations.
Thank you for recognizing me, and I appreciate all the support that you guys give to the school as well. As I said in the newspaper, it's not really about me, it's about what this community does and what you guys have offered the opportunity for me to be able to teach here, and that's all I got there, so thank you to you guys.
Thank you, Jackie. Before you run, I want to say a couple of nice things about you, so you gotta stay there for a second, okay? So, trustees, I went through the Facebook post that we put up when we announced the award for Jackie, and I actually pulled out some of the, there were a slew of comments, but I pulled out a few, and I just want to say them, read them, and recognize you, Jackie. So, a couple of them, or one of them was, "Congratulations to Jackie, greatest art teacher ever." Congrats, Jackie. To be honest, it doesn't surprise me. Her students continuously put out fabulous works of art every year. Congratulations, you've always been one of the best. And congratulations, well deserved and valued more than you will ever know. So Jackie, thank you for everything that you do here for kids at Tecumseh High School.
As I said to you, I'm gonna go shake hands like I make all my students.
Congratulations.
All right, next up tonight is our Tecumseh High School Link Crew. And trustees, I'm gonna bring them up to the podium in just a second, but I wanna, I wanna give a shout out to the teachers and the kids who are a part of Link Crew. It really does make a significant difference here at the high school as our new class of freshmen have transitioned into the building. So, these dedicated upperclassmen, they're not all here tonight because many of them have jobs and sports and all of the things as well, but the dedication of these upperclassmen to volunteer their time really makes a difference in the lives of our incoming class. From the tours they give, to the answers that they give, to the, just the offering of a friendly face in the hallway and the support, our Link Crew members are making a difference in creating a welcoming school community here at the high school. So, thank you to each and every one of you for being that bridge and for also joining us here tonight. I've got a couple of pictures and then you're gonna come up, okay? So, trustees, I've got some pictures from some of the folks here at the high school, and you can see one of them here on the screen, and another one. And just by the pictures, you can kinda get a sense of what this was really like for not only our Link Crew leaders, but also our incoming class of kids. It was pretty special, so I'm gonna bring them up right now, and they're going to share a few words, Mrs. Musselman and Mrs. Kuebler, our Link Crew leaders.
Thank you. If you're wondering what is going on in this photo, so each crew, when they meet with their freshmen on the first day of school, they go into a classroom and they engage in some activities to kinda get to know their crew and start to build a relationship, and then each of the leaders has to decide on a costume, and they have to provide this costume for their kids, and then when they leave for their tour of the building, they have to wear their costume. The idea is like, can we get freshmen to smile on their first day of school that is so stressful and anxiety-filled, and they're all so nervous? And we absolutely love the Link Crew program and that we're allowed to do this and we're, you know, continue to be able to do this here at the high school. I do think it's something that sets us apart from other schools in the county, and I think it does make a difference for our freshmen and for our leaders to like continue to provide opportunities for them to step into a role like this and build a relationship and connection with freshmen. And Tucker's also a Link leader, so he is kind of involved in this group as well.
Yeah, to talk a little bit more about the leaders that we have, we have some of the best of the best at Tecumseh as part of our Link Crew kids. So, we had over 104 applicants for this year, and we only accepted 53 of them. So, we have some of the best of the best. And with, a little bit about what that process looks like, is these kids apply, and we have to comb through it, and we've got other teachers that are giving feedback, and we're looking for students from all different walks of Tecumseh life that represent all parts of Tecumseh. So, it's not just your kids with good grades, it's kids that are involved in sports, involved in bands, maybe they just like reading, maybe they work after school, whatever it is, we like to have a nice diverse group, so that when they get in front of these freshmen, they can connect with them and continue to connect with them, not just on the first day of school, but they continue to meet with them throughout the year, and we do certain things like snack and studies before exams where they check in with their freshmen and kinda tell them some things, and they give them some advice, advice that they might be more likely to listen to from an upperclassman than an adult, because it's another kid that went through it and they can tell them. And then our leaders, they give up some of their own time even before school starts. We do two days of training that equates to about over six hours of training that they go through, where they become these leaders, and they go and they're, they run these groups together, and it's really phenomenal to see them step up and lead these groups. Do you want them to?
I would love for them to come up and introduce themselves.
They would love to.
All right.
Come on up, Jamison, why don't you start us off?
Hi, everyone, my name is Jamison Gross. I'm a senior this year.
I'm Lila Hanson, and I'm a junior this year.
Hi, I'm Melissa Eater, I'm also a junior this year.
Hi, I'm Ella Hardy, and I'm also a junior this year.
I'm Bridget Court, and I'm also a junior.
I'm Maya Whelan, and I'm also a junior.
I'm Rakinge Cole, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Coley Musselman, and I'm a sophomore.
I'm Blake Irish, I'm also a junior.
We tried to get as many as we could, but they are very involved kids, so, and then we got Tucker.
Well, hey, thank you so much for everything that you guys do. Thank you, students, for creating the environment, and let's make it a fabulous year, so thank Trustees, I do have one other thing that I want to show you this evening, but before I do, I just wanted to take a moment and welcome Tucker Cole. Tucker is, as you know, you met him last spring, Tucker's gonna serve as our Board of Education Student Rep, and Tucker was flying this evening straight from the football field to the boardroom. Okay, so Tucker, welcome. All right, trustees, I have one, I have one last thing. I just want to say a thank you to everyone who did so, so much to welcome our students, our staff, and our families back for another school year. So, what I did is I created a short video here that I want to share with you all that captures some of the sights of both the prep and then welcoming kids back into the building this past week. Josh, can you grab the light that's just inside that door? Might make it a little easier to see. All right, perfect.
Thank you.
Okay, here we go. All right, thank you.
Excellent.
Mr. Lewis, I'll turn it back over to you.
All right, this brings us to our time of public comment. First of all, do we have any public comment tonight? Spares me some reading this if I don't have to, and it looks like I don't have to. All right, we'll move on. Revisions approval of the agenda. I think we have one revision.
We do?
We do.
Apparently we do.
Sorry.
I move to amend tonight's agenda by adding the purchase agreement sale of Patterson ELC to discussion and action items.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the sale of the Patterson Building. Roll call vote. Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Aye.
Trustee McGee.
Aye.
Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
I move to approve the amended agenda for tonight's meeting.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the amended agenda of tonight's meeting. Roll call vote. Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Aye.
Trustee McGee.
Aye.
Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, on to scheduled reports.
Looks like we got Ms. Glenn.
Good evening, board. In your packet, you should have the July financial statements for what is our first month of the fiscal year 2025-2026. Cash on hand as of the end of July 31st is $3,748,389.92. Total accounts payable for the month of July is $1,095,041.96. And for the financial statement for the month of July, this is just, again, the first period of the fiscal year, you can see, we brought in very, very little revenue for the month of July. The state aid payment we do receive in July actually belongs to the prior fiscal year, so we brought in $6,017 in revenue for the month of July, and total expenditures for that same time period is $839,871. Again, more money goes out the door, hence the larger accounts payable run that we just discussed a few minutes ago, but much of that for the month of July, particularly the payroll that gets paid in July for the teachers, gets accrued back into the prior fiscal year. So, that $839,000 does represent current payments for that month for staff who do begin their, their year on July 1st through June 30th. That leaves estimated expenditures greater than revenue, $833,853, which would bring down estimated ending fund balance to 1.8 million. Is there any questions I can address for the board?
No questions? All right, thank you very much. Budget Committee, last Monday, Mr. Simpson's not here, Trustee McGee, kind enough to take the helm here.
Thank you. We talked about quite a few important items. If you haven't had a chance to, there were budget committee notes included in your packet, and I had links to some presentations as well as some memos, so if you have a chance and haven't had a chance, please review those. I'll just kinda speak to a couple highlights here. We talked about the state budget, I think Mr. Hilton already alluded to it, that the state has not made much progress in finalizing their budget for the year. There was a presentation, two presentations that Ms. Glenn shared that she recently acquired, one was from the Michigan Department of Education. During that discuss, part of the discussion, we discussed that our Title I revenue as well as special ed that we get through IDEA, which is facilitated through the LEASD, we expect to retain those revenues for '25-'26, but there is expected delays or pullbacks in other types of fundings. Currently, potential risks for TPS are Title II, which is professional development, for $60,000, and Title IV, which is around technology, student support services, PDIS, and the amount of about $20,000, so potential impact of $80,000, but we're still waiting to see if those are cut, delayed, or what's gonna happen with those. And Kelly or Mr. Hilton, please feel free to correct anything that I say.
Sure, yeah.
Yep. And as the U.S. Department of Education is eliminated, some of that federal funding will come to the state level, but it is undefined at this time. And outside of just the unknown and kinda from a planning perspective of not having the budget finalized, there is actually a cash, potential cash flow impact. If they do not finalize, if the state does not finalize the budget by September 30th, the normal first aid payment that we receive on October 20th may be delayed until November 20th. That would cause a pain point for not only TPS, but the majority of schools. And just for perspective, we talked about, you know, what if we needed to take out some type of cash flow loan, and in general, that takes about six weeks of process time, so. Another presentation was from the Michigan Education Advocates, and really that talked to the pain points in finalizing the budget, which are the impacts of the one big beautiful bill, as well as roads was the major kind of impact from a state level. House proposals were a little bit aggressive in reallocating dollars. For example, they're proposing that some, that gas tax that's included in the state funding be used for roads instead of, I believe, higher education, and then to kind of make up some and maybe add more to higher education, they are looking to move funds out of K-12 into higher education. So, really strapping K-12 in this whole kind of conversation. It's all in flux still, but that's kind of the, the House proposal. Moving on to school meals, and I saw some questions about this, so I did a little bit of extra research, so I just wanted to add a little bit more context here. We talked about what's called the CEP program, which is the Community Eligibility Provision, which is the federal program that processes free and reduced lunch, and to qualify for this, you have to submit a request, I guess, to the federal government and get approval for it, and basically what happens if students are qualified to receive free food normally, then this would be funding for that. So, the federal government, in our case, would pay 40% of students' free meals. The state has, for the past year or two, has had free meals for everyone regardless of status and need, and that's really what's up for question right now. So, for us, that's kind of 60% of the overall expenditures. And just for perspective, last year, the state gave us about $488,000. So, if they didn't go ahead and pass this, it could be an impact of about $488,000, and to make up for that, we do have a little bit of excess food balance of about $120,000, so that net impact could be $336,000. Again, it's still in flux, we are not actually anticipating that to happen, but it's still a potential risk for us. I did also want to address some concerns I saw out there, and feel free to correct me if this is wrong, Mrs. Glenn. But either way, our students, we have already said our students will receive free meals, so our students will receive no matter what, free meals if they want, this year. The question is, will there be free meals next year? But regardless, you know, for this year, our students are okay. The question comes to funding, and 40% of that funding regardless is gonna come from the federal government because they have already approved that for the year. So, the question is really the state. Is that correct?
Yes.
Yes, okay, good. So, I saw a lot of kind of concern about people saying that, you know, our students wouldn't be able to eat, and that's really very important, which I agree with. I just wanted to make sure that we're the funding center.
Just real quick, are these numbers, is this like the, the cost of the number of meals we served, or what it would cost for all the students to get a meal? How do we, just so I understand it?
Kelly, can you help with that?
Yeah, so with the CEP program, all students eat for free, for those students that, that qualified for the federal free and reduced lunch rate, those, that funding would still continue to come through the federal government, that claim that reimbursement for the meals served would come from there. They call them, the state portion is called the Michigan School Meals portion, that's roughly 60% of the remaining students who are eating the free lunch. That, that's the funding that's potentially in flux.
So, for total cost for meals, is that represented by the $488,000 figure?
Yeah, that would represent the 60% of the students that eat, that were not being reimbursed by the federal government.
Okay, that's, I think, the question I was driving at. Do we, I don't, I don't wanna beat this to death, I do wanna have a little bit of understanding though. Is the process still that students earlier in the day register whether they want that meal at lunch, or is it simply prepared and available?
So, generally speaking, yes. They, they will choose whether or not they, they want hot lunch or they brought cold lunch during the day.
Okay.
So, but patterns develop within that that we use to actually...
To kinda guide what numbers you're using here.
Right.
Okay.
Right. I think if I could just say one thing, the, this budget at the state of Michigan is getting more and more difficult by the day because we are, we are, we could very well be 25% of the way through our fiscal year before we even know. Additionally, the, the school meals program was a priority amongst all, the Senate, the House, and the governor's office, and, and now it has become politicized as part of the negotiations that are going on behind closed doors. What I'm hearing is, we could go all the way to September 30th, if not, a shutdown at that point, which then what Trustee McGee was sharing earlier about the state aid payment from October potentially being delayed. That will be a challenge, that will be a problem for us in about half of the school districts across the state of Michigan. So, thank you for letting me just say that.
Appreciate that. I did wanna make one more note here, that the state did put out a memo or two that basically said, "Student meals regardless are free through September 30th." The question is beyond September 30th. Are you gonna make mention of the MSBO survey?
I wasn't going to.
Just in reference to that, there was a survey that was done by MSBO, and it basically surveyed 214 schools and asked, districts asked them what they were gonna do and what they have done in regards to kind of the ambiguity, and basically people were preemptive and, you know, tried to be fiscally responsive and conservative and cut where they could, mostly outside of the classroom or, you know, due to attrition, and just kind of are waiting to see what happens. So, definitely pain points as they go into '25-'26. '24-'25, 15% of the districts that responded had a balanced budget with a note that 42 were deficit spending and 43 with budget surplus, I think that's kind of important. And then it kind of worsens going into '25-'26, although 17% still showing that balanced budget, which shows, you know, them trying to be fiscally responsible even with the ambiguity. Moving on, there was a Red Rover update, which was the time tracking, and Red Rover went into eFinance, which is the financial system. While there were a couple hiccups as far as logins to the software, so there were a couple manual entries, but most things went smoothly. In the future, they do expect to have a phone app that will assist with logins. And then Kelly gave a good overview of the monthly reports. We just talked about a few things, just a couple of expenses that were running higher. For example, community service was running a little bit higher than normal, and that was just the summer camp costs. And I think she covered everything there. Another couple of notes, on the cash flow statement, you may have noticed a change in the bank that's listed there, the financial institution, moving to West Banco, and that was due to the acquisition of Premier. So, we didn't really change banks, there was just a, an acquisition. And then the cash flow for, on the cash flow statement, the Capital Projects Fund 49 will be broken out moving forward in... will be broken out moving forward into two financial institutions. One would be West Banco, as it is currently stated. And then the portion of the tax and tax anticipation note of $950,000 will be pulled out into County National, which currently we have the note with, for the tax anticipation. Moving on to enrollment updates, numbers were looking good. We didn't have a final number, it was the first day of school, and we didn't have actually all students in their seats on that day. So we didn't have a final count, but things were looking good and trending up. For reference, we did budget flat enrollment. And then lastly, we had a conversation about capital expenses and what happened during the summer. The operations team was very busy of items that he had list, Mr. Madison had listed under general fund projects were just that, were treated as general fund expenditures of about $250,000. Those were not part of the sinking fund or the capital dollars. The Chromebooks that were addressed above about $114,000, those were being compensated with the E-rate that we have. And then there were a couple of items under basically sinking fund or capital funds. The three main projects came out of the capital funds we already had, which were three hundred and, about $354,000. So those three projects ran about $250,000, so there still would be technically a little bit of money left there. And we did not, we kind of put all of the pool things on hold except for things that were related to engineering and testing, et cetera. So we do have kind of that money still reserved. One note was about the elevator. So the elevator, we were planning to do $40,000 down payment to address the first half of it because we were waiting for parts. They were able to get parts to us very quickly unexpectedly. And we are also having some maintenance challenges with the elevator, just daily oiling of it. So we are going to go ahead and move forward with that project right away to the tune of about $100,000 for the entire project right now. And that was it. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay, Mrs. Brooks, on to safety facilities.
All right, we had a short and sweet meeting. The RFP is out for the scaffolding and the work that needs to be done to do that deeper dive into the pool. No pun intended there. They, they are anticipating us having a, an answer, a definitive answer hopefully by our November 11th meeting. So by November 11th, we should know if, if whatever is, is behind those walls is going to be fixable or what our situation is. Under safety and security update, our clock and PA systems for the, the middle school and high school are completely updated now. All of the district schools, Acre Sutton High and Middle School have the thumb term locks. And our classes have all been, there is, is, the windows and doors are all numbered and color-coded. And then the police and fire have a corresponding binder that gives them all that information and, and how the colors and, and numbers work so that they can get to an area easy. And that was about it.
Any questions? Very good. On to Tucker Cole. You're, and this is my fifth year on the board, I think you're the first male that's ever been representative. I think they've all been females. And the last one was really good, no pressure.
I've got some good shoes to fill. No, I'm very honored to be here. Thank you. I'm very honored to be here. I'll just say, I'm sure there's a long time to pass, so you guys- My name is Tucker Cole. I'm doing my senior year at the University of Michigan. I'm part of a lot of different sports teams, a lot of different clubs, and I decided to kind of be in the asset, sort of what THS needs, or thinking, and like, a lot of different things. I didn't make a super clear headline, because we really need fresh new school years, like, to come and be a band here a few days. But a lot of positive stuff through, I was going to talk about it, but they were just, I don't know about it, but. I was in the crew this year, and that was really good positive. It really, like, helped, you could tell the freshman, like, getting out of their comfort zone, just the costume and stuff like that, I was a really positive student. But everyone feels kind of silly, and I think, like, the wall is taken down a bit. So that was a really good positive. We're still currently, like, growing up PIS throughout our entire school. We've added some new members, trying to, like, broaden, like, the amount of students in the crew. It's a few guys, not just people who, like, who are just athletes, but they're, like, new students. And, like, recovering a lot of lessons, like, I think later this week, we plan on helping good sportsmanship as far as school ball game. But, you know, it always gets kind of tenuous, especially at home games and stuff like that. Just going over basic expectations and doing things like that. Still learning that tribe, systems like that, I think it's really positive, I think it's a good year. It's a fresh year. I don't, I didn't ask a lot of students what their thoughts were yet, because we're new, because it's still so new. But I know we have a really good freshman class this year, like, 220 kids, I think, if you have to pick. So I'm excited, I'll ask everybody their thoughts. So far, everyone's excited for the first year of school, I think, and it's pretty exciting to just be here and get back into this sort of things. But other than that, I'm just excited, and thank you guys for having me. And I don't think I have much to add, but I'm happy with my thoughts, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tucker.
Any questions for Tucker?
Any questions?
Are we going to win, Terrence?
I'm only one player on the team, but I'm crossing my fingers. Same. Put our trust in Mr. Lewis.
There you go.
We're putting that in the agenda now.
Oh, well, thank you, Mr. Brooks, that's great. We do a good job. Mr. Hilton, how about, we'll move on to discussion items, TPS Board of Education norm.
Okay, give me just a second here. All right, trustees, this is really a continuation of the conversation that we started a couple of weeks ago when we were last together around the norms. I didn't change this presentation at all from last time, so I'm going to just move through a couple of slides and, and get to our current norms. And so I thought I would just start as a reminder that these are the, the current norms that we have here in Tecumseh. I would say that, as I've reflected anyway on these norms and our discussions from the last meeting, and my year-plus here as a member of the team, I, I feel like these norms make a lot of sense. I feel like they're appropriate and they, they guide our work as a board. If I was to say one thing, I, I would just say that it might make some sense for us to consider some sort of community involvement norm. I, I say that from a place of, of really trying to work hard to get myself involved in the community, but also the community involved with us here at schools. And so whether that's through a parent advisory, community meetings that I've gone to, community meetings that we've hosted, or I have hosted, letters to the Herald, Facebook posts, the videos, et cetera, et cetera, all the way to my invitation to parents who are now sitting on our, our hiring committees. I think that's an important piece of the puzzle as well. So it might, just for, for discussion and, and just to put it out there as a possibility, it might make some sense to develop some sort of community involvement norm. But I will stop here. I will turn it back over to Mr. Lewis and the board for further discussion. And if there's any slides from last time that you want me to pull up, I certainly can.
So this morning, Mr. Lewis deputized me for this discussion. I think where we start is, first, how do we feel about these six? Do we keep them? Are there any small changes we need to make? And then we can talk about if there are new norms that everyone would like added and what those subject matters would be. So again, kind of from Mr. Hilton's previous presentation, but also kind of the, the process that this goes through, the, the norms are behaviors. These can also drive and start in the policy committee, a review of certain policies that link back to these norms and board operating procedures. That would be kind of like next step that we would discuss if we need them and where we need them. So I guess I'll open it up first for, just for these six. So, you know, do we feel like, like we want to keep these? I think they're a good reminder for all of us. Are there any, and if you don't want to keep all six, you know, or if you want to change some of them? And then we'll talk about nuances, if that kind of works from a process perspective, so.
The third one down, where it says, "We, unless we vote, we speak in one voice." I think some cool clarity is that everybody here should vote their conscience. Everybody here knows you got elected by a certain electoral, electoral, you don't know all their names, but you, you know who the people are. But Tucker just said something about sportsmanship before the first game. It really boils down to some sportsmanship and decorum. I mean, I've, I've come out here shaking my head over the last five years, thinking, how do, I don't know, how we got this vote. But I, I go home, I explain it to my dog. He looks at me just disinterested as my wife would, so I, I don't bother her. And so I, it's, you just get it out of your system. You didn't, you didn't get your way, that's fine. You had your, you had your chance, there's seven of us to vote. Guess it'd be six tonight, and Mr. Simpson's not here. But it's, it's still, it's, it's a board decision, it's a unified decision. You don't have to have necessarily unity with a decision yourself, you know, because you, but you did, you expressed yourself by the way you voted. But it goes on, and, I mean, clearly, I've been wrong on things where I didn't get my way because we seem to have gotten better over the last five years as a board, in my opinion.
Yeah, I think the history of this was that we had certain board members continuing to share that they didn't agree with the decision. So I think there probably is some clarity that's needed here related maybe to, you know, we'll have open, honest discussion on every item we vote for, but once the vote is complete, the district moves forward with the decision, and we support the decision as one board. There are different ways that we can kind of look at that, but I'm, I'm open to hearing others' opinions on that.
I think that's good, I think you said it right. I mean, it's, we're not rubber stampers, we don't come in here and just go, oh, obviously, Mrs. Davis votes, I'm going to vote what she does, or I really want Darren to like me today, so I'm going to vote whatever he wants. And we're not, we're not an elementary school, we, we do our thing. But once a decision gets passed, then it's, we'll be, we'll be adults about it. And sometimes you're surprised, like I said, a couple times, I didn't like something the first time around, and a year later, we vote on it again, and I've changed my mind.
True story.
You just have to go through it. Pardon?
I said true story.
I remember that. So, in, in reviewing the norms that you had brought to us from other places, I feel like, like ours kind of encompass almost all of them. I, I like Lynn's change, not from the perspective of, I mean, I think we said it fine. Once we vote, we speak in one voice. But I think it's important to maybe reframe that for the community who, as you said, you know, has kind of gotten a perception that, that we're just all expected to vote the same way, and that's, nothing could be further from the truth. It's just, once the vote is made, we're a unified board. Maybe another, just a thought, throwing it out there. That very first one, we treat each other with dignity, with dignity and respect. I, I almost would like to see us extend that not only to each other, but to all staff.
Do, is it for the, the parties involved? I see we, we treat fellow board members, TPS staff, and the community with dignity and respect. Just kind of to detail that out, is there any need to put parents in there, or do we agree that's community?
Yeah, TPS community probably covers it.
So, some of those things are as rudimentary as you learn those in kindergarten.
Did you read that book again this week?
I, I've got, I just looked at the pictures.
I don't think there are pictures in there.
I don't know if it, I don't know if it falls under the, the norms or maybe operating procedures, but one of the topics I brought up was trying to seek to understand topics prior to voting. And I have a better understanding now. I, I talked to Mr. Hilton about the meetings, you know, we have them twice a month. So the reality is, it's very hard to prepare in advance. So one of the things I threw out, and, and then some of the research I've done in the local schools, is most of them go to once-a-month meetings. So it does allow the folks over here that are preparing, and for Mr. Hilton, a little bit more time to be better prepared and in advance, so we can see their stuff well in advance and have questions. The problem now is, sometimes you might get them on a Friday, and then you're asked, we're all asking Matt lots of questions. And then by Monday, we don't have time to dialogue, and all of a sudden, we're sitting in here, and maybe they're not answered. So I, I don't know if it's a norm, or if it's just something we think about as we go forward. And I know I, I bombarded Greg with times of, hey, what about this, what about that? There's just, it's late in the day, it's the weekend, and you just don't have time to think about it. So just something, I don't think it's a norm, I think it's more of an operating procedure, kind of along those lines.
Yeah, I, I would agree with you, Darren, I think, I think it's a good discussion. We want to be careful not to put too many things in the norms that are like policy or like, but I think that's something that, when we look at our policies, maybe there's something we could put in about, you know, by practice, we discuss at one meeting, vote at a second meeting unless there are these, you know, extenuating circumstances that require us to discuss and vote at the same time. And then the agenda has to be amended, all that kind of stuff. So somehow, I agree with you, documenting what, what that is, so that the public understands that if they happen to watch one meeting where we do, like, tonight, where we'll have a discussion and a vote, that it's not our standard practice, and these are the reasons why those things would happen, so.
Along that point, I've heard us say a few times that we have a desire to be fact and evidence-based, and that also comes, came out in the superintendent training as well. So I don't know if we want to include something like that. Like, sometimes we're moving so quickly that we're kind of just responsive and maybe, or sometimes a little bit emotional versus fact-based. So maybe, I don't know, just adding that in there might be helpful.
Is that more to trustee Miller's point around prep time?
Not always, I don't think you can prep for everything. I mean, that would be very helpful. I mean, having something to review within hours or less of a meeting is kind of challenging. But just sometimes in conversations, or even bringing, like, opinions and things like that, sometimes it'd be a little bit more fact-based, or at least evidence-based. I think facts can sometimes be challenged from, depending on the perspective that you're coming from.
So do you want that as a norm or an operating procedure, do you think?
I was speaking more to norms.
Okay.
Yeah. I am interested in your comment about the community. Do you have any thoughts about how to intermingle that?
Well, I liked the idea of the, the exchange from trustee Brooks and trustee Davis around updating some of the language around dignity and, and respect. Maybe there's a way to also invite it. I hadn't gone with any specific language, other than just sharing my initial thought around the importance of inviting the community in. And maybe it becomes part of a, a norm in the way in which we all operate.
Yeah, I mean, one, one idea could be, with Mrs. McGee's comment, and the community, a norm about decisions are fact and evidence-based, including community input whenever possible, that, that sort of a, a language. I, I think I want to, personally, I want to keep the dignity and respect thing separate from that, but I think it's a good point of, we, we could say something to the effect of, you know, decisions are, are based on evidence and discussion, including, when available, an appropriate community input, something like that. So that it's, it's clear that we're including them in, in discussions. Got it. Let me take through that one and add one. Okay. Jacob, any thoughts?
I, when we went through the examples from the other districts- I, when we went through the examples from the other districts, I, I guess, my feeling was that I like the norms to be vague enough to not define what we're doing, right? And, you know, I think that there's, there's two parts to this norm discussion. One is what we're presenting to the community as our standard for ourself, as a, as a means of a measuring stick. And then the other side is, are we trying to achieve a specific outcome in terms of behavior here at the board table? And to me, a lot of the discussion around, you know, when information's out, and how we review it and time things are, are operational and not behavioral norms. And I, I felt comfortable with what we have, but it's also not a hill I would die on. So, that's kind of my take. I've, I've, I feel like whichever direction we go on it, we're gonna end up with a board that's functioning reasonably well and acting in the interest of the community. And so, it isn't something that I feel like I need to have an argument with anybody about.
Fair enough.
So, if I could kind of sum up, so that we can move on to the next item. So, I think definitely we're all on board with adding, making the community and staff a more concrete call-out in the norms, probably in, in the first norm. Also, maybe clarifying point three about, you know, decisions we make, once they're voted upon, the district will move forward and will support the implementation. Something that kind of keeps it non-emotional. And then I'll consider and look at some benchmarking on if the evidence-based kind of voting, including community input, kind of if those are in other norms. I attended the MASB summer session last weekend in Lansing, and they shared a little bit about norms and some of the, the training courses that I took. I did, I did see a lot about, I saw including the community, but maybe not so much detail. But I think if it doesn't go in the norm, as we consider if there's board operating procedures as we go into maybe those discussions, and we talk about when the discuss first, vote second, you know, share community input in the discussion, that kind of thing. Maybe that's something that could be put into there. But let me do a little benchmarking on that and see what I find. If, if you have something of an example from your studies, please send them to me. Happy to look at that, but I'll work to kind of get a draft of this, maybe beginning of next week, and then kind of get it out to everybody, and maybe we can have it as another discussion item for September meeting, if that works for everybody. All right. Thank you, Mr. Hilton.
All right. Mr. Hilton, back to you.
All right, trustees, next up this evening is Patterson Elementary School. So, trustees, you know that we've been in conversation now for quite a while regarding the sale of Patterson to a local buyer that is now called The Patterson 1953 LLC. The intent of the buyer continues to be a multifaceted approach that would involve a homes development project that would maintain the historical integrity of the neighborhood, while also developing the school building into apartment-style flats. Through the, the due diligence of everyone involved, there is a signed purchase agreement in your packet for a one-time sale price of $150,000, with a closing date of no later than September 30, 2025. The building is being sold to the purchaser as is, with the purchaser accepting full liability therefore, as well as being responsible for property taxes. As part of the agreement, the building will be leased back to us for $1, with the lease terminating on August 28, 2026. During the term of the lease, we would continue to be responsible for the utilities, pushing the snow, mowing the grass, securing the building, as well as ensuring the property against risks such as fire, theft, vandalism, et cetera. Trustees, I, I want to say that I have really very much appreciated the work that's gone into selling this property. Mr. Madison, Mr. Madison has cert, I want to recognize him, because he has certainly done quite a bit of work. And he and I have both really enjoyed getting to know the buyer. The most exciting aspect of this sale, for me anyway, is the long-term benefits. I think this is a, a win-win-win opportunity in that more, excuse me, more housing is thoughtfully developed in our community. The city certainly benefits, and in the long term, we certainly benefit when kids move into those homes and enroll in our schools. Again, the purchase agreement and lease are in your packets. Additionally, in your packet is a board resolution that, should you choose, you would vote on later this evening, that would authorize me to act as your signatory in selling the building and then signing the lease. I'll stop it here and turn it over to board discussion.
Mr. Hilton, can you explain the lease, the purpose of the lease? Is this common or?
I don't know as though it's common or it's not common, but it was part of discussions that, that we had had that were supportive of a thoughtful project and a thoughtful use of Patterson Elementary School that benefits certainly us, but also certainly would bring a, a large number of benefits to the community.
When, when we get ready to go into action, do you want me to make a motion to suspend our normal practice of waiting?
Yes, please.
Okay, just wanted to verify.
Darren, you got a question?
Yeah, just a question. I, I'm not familiar with this, so I'm wondering, it says that Section 5, within all these inspections, zoning and rezoning approvals, of which inspections and approvals shall be completed within 15 days of the effective-
Can you speak into your microphone just a little more?
Within the effective date. Is that reasonable? 15 days, is that, can all that get done within the 15 days of the purchase agreement?
So, I think quite a bit of work has already occurred.
Okay.
And, and I, I, I do, this was vetted through, through TRU, as well as the buyer's council, and have come to this as the agreement. So, I would say yes.
Okay.
Originally, the year time period was to allow for some of those activities, was it not?
I think that the, the year time period was more of a partnership that would allow for a thoughtfully planned project that benefits us, benefits the city, and is, I don't mean to keep using the word thoughtfully, right, but done thoughtfully.
So, he's just gonna do this more independently, and the sale will be done within 15 days of basically signing the agreement?
The, the inspections would be done, the sale would be done no later than September 30th.
Okay. Is there, and I'm sorry, I didn't ask this question before.
Yeah.
I didn't see any clauses in here to possibly prevent something like what happened with the administration building, is that what we're calling it? Where it kind of, we sold it, and then they are putting it up basically for higher money. And it just, just kind of sitting there, worse for our community, it's just not, nothing's happening with it.
So, there is nothing in this purchase agreement to that extent. What I, what I can say, and what I would want the, the board to know, as well as the community, that, that this individual has already invested a tremendous amount of time and effort into
Ten capital.
this project over the last three to four months, where anything can happen, but, but where I believe anyway that, that the investment and the intent is as it's set.
And if it's not, it, it's their building to do as they wish, once it's sold. And much like I talked about at the city when we had a, a meeting with them, and that was asked, if they want to revert, or it can revert to the city, we don't want it back. The city didn't either, so, so we left it out. As, if you, if you sell your house, and it appraises in value, or you do repairs and fix it up, you can turn around and sell it for a higher amount, too. It's the same kind of concept. Are we good?
Anyone else? Okay, I will.
I'll make a motion, then?
Yeah, I look for a motion to suspend our, our norms and move this from action, our discussion item to action item, and part of the reason for that is the sales have been, has been talked about for 90 days at least. This isn't like the first time we've heard this.
So, I will make a motion that we will suspend our normal process of discussion, discussion at one meeting, voting the next, to allow us to vote today on the sale of Patterson.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to suspend our norms of having discussion item and then action items before we vote, so we can do this on the same day. Although, as I said, this has been talked about for about 90 days. Roll call vote. Trustee Brooks.
Aye.
Trustee McGee.
Aye.
Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye.
All right.
On the consent agenda.
No, we're gonna make a motion.
Right, we have the vote.
All right, it's a long one.
Yep.
Whereas, the district has received an offer from Patterson School 1953 LLC, the purchaser, to purchase real property, property commonly known as The Patterson Intermediate Learning Center, located at 401 North Van Buren Street, within the city of Tecumseh, Lenawee County, Michigan. And whereas, the board has determined that it would be in the best interest of the district to sell the property to the purchaser under terms and conditions contained in the purchase agreement, attached hereto, and made a part hereof as attachment one, which includes a triple net leaseback agreement. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the board authorizes, hereby authorizes, the sale of the property to the purchaser. The board authorizes and directs Matthew Hilton, the superintendent, or his designee to execute the purchase agreement substantially in the form in attachment one, and to make any revisions to the purchase agreement not inconsistent with this resolution, and to take any other actions to sell the property, including signing closing documents, all subject to review and approval by the district's legal counsel. All resolutions and parts of resolutions insofar as they conflict with the provisions of this resolution be and the same are hereby rescinded.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to approve the sale of Patterson and to appoint Superintendent Hilton to act as our counsel or our, our appointee to go ahead and handle that sale. Are there any questions about that, anyone? Okay, roll call vote. Trustee McGee.
Aye.
Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Now, we can go to consent agenda.
Now, you can go to consent agenda.
Roll on all these motions.
I move to approve the consent agenda, which includes the minutes from the regular Board of Education meeting on August 11, 2025.
Second.
Okay, it's been a motion and second for to approve the consent agenda minutes from the regular board meeting of August 11. Trustee Davis.
Aye.
Trustee Miller.
Aye.
Trustee Martinez.
Aye.
Trustee Brooks.
Aye.
Trustee McGee.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Superintendent's report, Mr. Hilton.
Thank you, thank you, President Lewis, trustees. Next up on the agenda this evening is our Year Four, Quarter One Strategic Plan Report. So, tonight is really about sharing the goals that we have set in each of our five goal areas for the 25-26 school year. This is, this is an important, it's an important moment to recognize that we, we, it's not a time when we consider all the work that we did last year to be done and finalized, but rather a moment where we think about what's been accomplished, and what are the next steps as we continue to actualize our strategic plan. So, having said that, we have also been in discussion as a, a board here around the strategic plan, and whether or not we're in a place to revisit the plan and adapt it, or maybe even redo the strategic plan. So, I have, I've, I've spoken with Debbie Stair from the MASB, who was the consultant who led your, your, your last strategic plan. And she's made some suggestions to me, and I'm gonna share those with you, but I'm gonna share them when we get to the goal area of communications and community engagement, because it's gonna make the most sense there, anyway. So, for now, I'm gonna turn it over to Ms. Way, and she's gonna come up first.
All right, Year Four. So, in the area of academics and programs, we are looking at three goals for this year, objectives. So, the first one really comes out of a conversation that we've been having at the administrative level here at the high school, and then also with the counselors, and thinking about what might be a good next step as far as a course to help prepare students for specific careers. And business course keeps kind of coming up and coming up. And so, we've kind of been talking about what that could look like. And then meanwhile, we also started having conversations with Kelly Jo Gilmore, the Economic Development Director here in Tecumseh. And she has a lot of ideas for how she might wanna help support the schools, partner with the schools. Just one example is, you know, if we had a business course, she has the idea that a lot of local businesses don't have a lot of time or resources to dedicate to promoting their businesses on social media, or things like that. And so, she would love to have students help do that. So, that could be a part of a course and things like that, working with the city. So, our first goal really is to develop and secure approval for a new high school business course by collaborating with the curriculum committee, aligning the syllabus with state standards, and incorporating input from our business partners. The course framework would be finalized, resourced, and ready for student enrollment next school year. So, if you can remember with other courses that we've approved, it is a process. We usually start that in January, we take it to the curriculum committee, we start working on a syllabus. It takes about a full year to get a new course adopted here at the high school. So, we want to get that going and have it ready to roll for next school year. What we're gonna need to be creative about is thinking about what we want to call that course, because that's going to affect how we staff that course. It's not easy to find people with the correct certifications to be able to teach a business course anymore. They're like unicorns out in the wild. So, we have to be really creative on who we get to teach this course, and what certifications that we can have to help staff that. The second goal is, we've done a lot of work around career readiness. Our, our career committee that met last year, we talked about a lot of that in the spring with all of the things that we did last year. We have a career corner on the website, which I think I'll be sharing with you in the future. We developed that portrait of a graduate, some of those other projects that we've been working on. Those are all ready to go, so now the next step really is incorporating them into our current courses and curriculum. So, that's going to take a lot of work, thinking about how can we get this in front of students? What does that look like? How, with our portrait of the graduate, those, those key traits that we want, how do we start teaching those to students as early as kindergarten? So, that's going to be a year-long project as well. And then the third one is, you've heard me talk about this before, but we are really ready to start rolling with providing that soft skill certification. We have a couple things that we're working on. So, our Plan A is, it's a program called Bring Your A Game, and that is something that we're gonna do in our English 12 course. We, we redid our pacing-guided things last year, so we could incorporate a lot more career readiness for students with like resume building, mock interviews with local businesses in town, some of those things. So, this Bring Your A Game, at the end of it, they would get a certification. So, the ISD would be offering that support for us. But kind of going along with this is, they're looking to purchase something bigger that they can share with all districts. And so, they've asked me to look at a few of the resources with them. I spent some time today going over one of them, I think it was called Microburst. But really, they have about 300 online courses, little modules that students can take. And then at the end of it, they can get a certification, they can start to earn badges or credentials, and then they could have a transcript that they could print out with all of these different courses that they're taking. The two that I demoed today were interpersonal skills and communication, and they were good. And they were good, you know, it's maybe like fifteen minutes with the videos and kind of like scenarios you have to walk through. But then the nice part after it is that there's a whole group activity that you would do in the class where you have to actually apply that knowledge. So that's one that they're looking at right now, and so they're gonna be keeping me involved, because I've been a very squeaky wheel about this at the ISD level of how, you know, when are we gonna get the support? When are we gonna get this resource? So I'll keep you guys updated on that, but right now, those are our three goals, and we're excited to get started. Year four, it's hard to believe.
Right?
It's been the fourth year, yeah.
Whatever you do, don't, don't oil that squeaky wheel.
Yeah, keep squeaking, sister.
Before Kim comes up, any questions for Megan?
Thank you.
Okay.
Good evening. I am here to share our objectives in the learning environment, environment and culture area of the strategic plan. We've done a lot of training of staff, getting a lot of input. For the PD, we've offered over the last few years. We've also been implementing SEL curriculum. But now we wanna really take a look at the middle school's master schedule and explore and develop a schedule that allows us to give our students targeted support. So whether that's interventions, or enrichment, or even independent practice. That's a real robust schedule, lots of moving parts over there at the middle school. And we wanna really build time within the day for our staff to support our students in these three different areas. Also, or number two, this was kind of a carryover from last year. We wanna make sure we get student leadership groups at all levels, in the elementaries, middle school, and high school, that are having regular meetings. We're very strategic, and, and the topics that they're, we're presenting to them, we're getting their input. And then we're gonna ask those groups to report back to, you know, the, the staffs at the school, come to the board, and even in the community. So only two objectives here, but they're both pretty robust and are gonna take a lot of work to accomplish. Any questions? Yeah.
So for like the student, like leadership groups, you said at like each level?
Mm-hmm.
I, well, I think at the high school, we'll build on existing. We don't have leadership groups in our elementary, and we do have some in the middle school. So really, building on what you guys are already doing here, because you have a lot of student voice at the high school, which is awesome, and then starting to develop that at the younger grades. Great question.
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment about number one. I'm super excited about that. I think this takes our district past kind of the daily requirement. So of course, five oh fours, IEPs, and even prior to that is interventions. But enrichment or inter, independent practice is for those students that maybe can be pushed a little more and move from kind of the middle group to the more performing group, and then also allowing those students that really are in that kind of upper echelon to go into independent practice. Students have already been doing this, but without guidance. So I think this is super exciting, and definitely something as we get it going that we need to, to share and push out in the community. I think this is exciting for all students.
It will certainly impact the chief.
Good job.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Madison. As a reminder, the goal statement for operations as a strategic plan is that we will continue to increase investments in infrastructure and provide safe, clean, and reliable services. The objectives to meet those goals for year four is a continued evaluation of capital needs and the estimated cost to address building and infrastructure updates in a rapidly changing economy. This does include prioritizing capital projects and planned sinking fund projects, and a lot of that is gonna be based on exploration or what we find in, in the midst of these projects and while we're working through engineering and architecture. Also includes contractor and material availabilities in kind of an unstable market right now, and then also immediate needs. So if we have issues with, you know, roof C H V A C, or as we just are working on elevators, things like that, those will definitely be moved to the front, be prioritized ahead of others. Objective two is to develop and implement a plan for next phases of building safety and security based on information provided by staff, community, and industry professionals. So some of the things we're already looking at for the next phases are portable radios, which we've applied for a grant for through the federal government, rafter kiosks at the high school, middle school, expansion of our card access systems and door security, and then of course, the filter first and safe drinking water programs that are mandated by the state, which will be working through this school year. And then objective three is to increase communications to staff, families, and community on infrastructure improvements and investments to increase transparency and trust. This started even this week, as we started the biweekly updates to all district staff, again, from the operations department. This will also include updating our websites and social media updates on sinking fund and capital projects as we move forward, now that we will start receiving sinking fund money this fall. Questions on operations? Thanks, Josh.
Okay, trustees, in the, the goal area of personnel and leadership, Tecumseh Public Schools will implement effective systems that promote growth in a supportive work environment. Trustees, unfortunately, Ms. Adams Ak is out ill today, so I am going to jump in and share her part. I think one of the things that you know coming out of last year is that we really focused on a system of onboarding and mentorship for employees. And one of the goals going into this year is to implement a structured offboarding process that really defines and consistently includes exit interviews where we gather some actionable feedback from the employees that are, are leaving our ranks that will inform us on areas that we may have blind spots to, or areas that we might just not know about, that we can then use to, to, to make improvements. Goal area two, this is a continuation, and then we'll, we'll continue to update, update our job descriptions, ensuring role clarity, aligning performance standards with responsibilities, and supporting staff in achieving our professional, their professional growth goals as well. Any questions on that? Yes, sir.
Number one, I think is great, you know, any business or school should have something like that. One question in regards to succession planning, that follow-up under here somewhere sometime this year, that later in the year?
So I have started to think about that, because you mentioned it at a board meeting a couple, I think it was two weeks ago. And succession planning is, is critically important as we, we think about our schools. And so if you give me a little time to collect some more of my thoughts on that, I will certainly share it with you. Okay. Okay, moving on to goal area of communications and community engagement. You know, trustees, the, the first goal here is to continue our marketing and communication efforts that have already been underway. We'll continue with our This Is Us series. We're looking to add a regular alumni spotlight series, and we're going to develop a set of short, one to two-minute videos that really highlight our school district. And what I mean by that is it might be two minutes at Tecumseh High School, two minutes at Sutton, two minutes with Ms. Way in curriculum instruction and assessment, two minutes in athletics, two minutes in the Tecumseh Public Schools music department, and really highlight all of the things that make us special, and highlight our, our staff and kids, and, and tell the, those stories through those two-minute videos that I think we can grab people's attention and, and really share with, with, share with the community what it is that we do. Our second goal, trustees, you, you know that we don't know exactly what will occur with our pool until we have a chance to gather more information. So we certainly do know, though, that the pool will continue to be an effort in communications and community engagement. So certainly, it is there, and as we gather that information, we'll take the, the next steps. But more on that, more on that goal set. We're also setting a goal this year to further develop our brand by developing a branding kit that will create a common set of logos and slogans that we'll all use consistently for letterhead presentations, signature lines, et cetera. Further, I have an intention this year of engaging our staff and community in our every, every student, every day slogan. That slogan has been around for a bit, and, and maybe it's just time to revisit it. Maybe there's a, maybe there's something better that more succinctly captures what we do. And we have that conversation as a, as a community. We'll also, through that conversation, define and reinforce our core values and our guiding principles, yet that is a conversation that has to have with staff and kids and community. So that'll be a goal. And then lastly, trustees, I mentioned this a bit earlier. I did speak with Debbie Stair from the MASB regarding our plan. I gave her essentially the, the update with where we are, an overview of what's been done, and the, the context of the current state, if you will, of the Tecumseh Public Schools, meaning that we have two new board members. There's a new superintendent. We've recently reorganized. We've recently passed the sinking fund. The, the list goes on. So Debbie shared a few thoughts with me that I will now share with you. Her first thought was, things change quickly. We all know that. Certainly, that has been the case over the past few years for us. And given the amount of change, Debbie is actually recommending that we begin a new process as opposed to an update of our current plan. It doesn't mean that we, we throw it all out, but rather we come back together as a community in the same ways that you did about four years ago. We go through that process again, and we build a plan for the next three to five years. And if the board is interested, I actually have a meeting scheduled, I thought she might be, so I have a meeting scheduled with her tomorrow to talk about next steps with, certainly, I would have to bring you back more information, and, and we'll, and we'll do so, with a, a community kickoff that would begin sometime shortly after the new year. I think that would pretty much match the, the pattern from the, the last time you went through the strategic planning cycle. So I will pause here and turn it over to the board for discussion and questions.
So related just to number four, I think for the last round, each board member sent a list of people to you, but, or to the superintendent, to Mr. Hilterly. But I think habits change for considering individual participation. And so I wonder if there isn't something we could do that's put out to the community, asking them if they're interested, and maybe some questions as to why, so that, you know, we can maybe broaden it past the, the board members' networks for?
If I remember correctly, they do like a survey that goes out to the community? That might be a good place to put a, would you be interested in participating in a, in a, you know, full-day forum for this?
Yep.
So just, just, so I, I think I've got it, but the, the, the past cycle, board members had a chance to share names of potential, potential strategic plan community, committee members with the superintendent, who then put it together. Whereas, there is some, some will to put out more of a survey and invite more, more participation as a whole. Okay?
Yeah, I, we, so we had a building futures committee at the time, and I think some of those people kind of automatically spilled into this, because it was in somewhat of the same vein. And then we all were able to give some suggestions.
I got it.
More parents.
Yeah.
Would be good. More parents.
And we had staff, admin, students. It was, it was quite the mix.
And having some non-parent residents, too, you know, so that they have a seat at the table here as we.
Maybe a few folks that grilled you on the sinking fund.
I know who they are.
I thought you might.
They might be good to get in here and see how it actually works.
Okay, if there's no more questions or, or thoughts there, what I will do is go back and take this set of information to Debbie, and she and I will begin to craft a proposal, if you will, that I will then bring back to you as soon as possible. Okay?
Sounds good.
Turn it back over to you, Mr. Lewis.
Are you on to good news?
We are on to items scheduled for the next agenda, which certainly, we will have plenty of good news. We will have some discussion items. And then I'm planning a, Ms. Way mentioned it, a, a career corner presentation.
Cool.
Very good. On to board member, just comments and discussion. We heard a lot tonight, a lot of good things. Wanted to hear if anybody have any thoughts? You're invited for this, too.
Yeah, I can speak up.
I, I'd start with, I have a freshman, and she hasn't stopped talking about Claire Cusino and Link Crew. And the fact that they were deer, I guess. They wore deer antlers everywhere, and she wears those around the house. So, well done to Claire and team on Link Crew for that. And our junior, this is kind of the first year of high school that she's had very, very positive feelings about the first week. And so shout out to Mrs. Foley, because she's worked with our family a lot to get both kids kind of to this point. But definitely, I think the teachers are saying, you know, doing the right things. There were way more syllabi this year than we've seen in previous years, which I think for Kaylee helped her understand what, how things were gonna go and what to look for in that, so just a really positive first week. The other thing I wanted to mention to you, Mr. Hilton, is the MEDC is developing a CTE dashboard that shows CTE programs across the state. I know that LISD is involved in that. They showed some prototypes. It's pretty swift, and, you know, let's make sure our things are in there, too. Let's make sure LISD is representing us properly there. But then also, it's just a great way to benchmark kind of what's happening across the state, so.
So I wanna say on the, regarding the Link Crew, and to you as well, I think not just this group and this year, but, you know, over a period, the period of years I've been around the school, I'm always so impressed with our upper-level kids and their level of maturity. You know, when the juniors and the seniors interact with the younger students, I think, you know, I know when we were doing the reorganization, the concerns about, you know, the seniors and the younger kids being around each other were, were brought up. And I remember thinking then, boy, I, I trust our seniors around the younger kids probably more than any other group in the district. There's a, a maturity and, and a dignity that the kids carry themselves with here that I think reflects both the community and the staff and the work that go on in the school here. And so I wanna commend both the students and, and the staff. I, I think that is really awesome to see.
So I just had a few questions.
Sure.
And the plans, what it entails specifically are, or is it kind of like up in the air? Like, I don't know how the sinking fund exactly works, or like, is there a super accessible way for community members to know, like, where it's going, or like something like that? Because I, I want to.
Great question. So there is a whole bunch of materials that, that we actually have as we were promoting the sinking fund. The way the sinking fund works is very different from a bond. A bond, think of a bond as like a loan, where you get all the money upfront. The sinking fund comes annually as part of the summer tax bill, which actually isn't due until the middle of September. So from the time that we passed the sinking fund to today, we still haven't received any of those money. So what Mr. Madison was talking about, and a little bit of what I was talking about, is the development of a website that's gonna, or it'll be on our website, but it'll, it'll essentially demonstrate to the community exactly what you're asking. But if you wanna know now all of those things, we've talked about them at various board meetings. Happy to get them to you, and you can share them far and wide. I'm happy to get them to you and you can share them far and wide.
Cause I was talking with some students just the other day about like, people brought up the pool, because as I'm sure you all, it's a very contentious subject right now. I'm sure you guys have walked out and talked to it, acknowledged them. But people were talking about like how the pool, like it's a really big thing because like a lot of the community uses it and stuff like that. And someone brought up like the idea of our tennis courts here are terrible too. They're really dangerous and they've got giant cracks in them. Someone brought up possibly adding the additional like pickleball courts, which is a really big and rising like thing, especially when, I know our age demographic in the town is a lot of older people too. It's like a really accessible sport of maybe adding that to try and add some appeal to like more community like amenities that we have, like as a, because like we have the pool, yes, and it's like, I think the obvious example of like, the community can come to a TPS building and like get involved really easily, but maybe like, like, I don't know, I feel like that's like another good opportunity that like we could have to like try and get more community members to come to TPS building to experience and see what it's like, different things like that.
Absolutely.
I know, that's just an idea.
I totally agree.
But I don't know how some.
I think the senior class is very common to go over to Heritage and do pickleball all summer.
I saw people playing pickleball on the tennis courts the other day.
They do.
Yeah, I didn't, but like, yeah, I'll wait until, I'll ask you what the sinking fund entails later. I just didn't.
So I can tell you now that pickleballs are not a part of the sinking fund plan. But to your point, one of the things that Mr. Madison and I have done is look for USTA grants, look for grants through the Michigan Economic Development Corporation. We are not there, okay? So I don't want to, I don't want to give any false hope, but those are things that we're looking at that would, to your point, improve our facilities, but also draw the community in in meaningful ways.
Yeah, that's what, like, like making, I guess, like TPS more about, more than just the people like who are in the public school system, but in the entire city.
Absolutely.
And wasn't the tennis court in?
It is.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
I've been working on it six years.
I know you guys all.
I just want to make one comment. The school does a senior sunrise also for the kids and it's not only that event on the sunrise, but all the things the kids do before that, they get together. I think we had six, seven girls for weeks in our basement painting jeans and on that day, they all wear decorative jeans, just really bonding and you don't see it just for the senior sunrise, but you see those kids, there were kids that our daughter went to school with at Harriet Park that she doesn't hang out with a whole lot anymore and they all showed up and it was just a great event, great, a great way and I wish we could promote that more in the school that those things are going on because you don't always see that.
Right.
And I tell you, the kids really like it, they enjoy it a lot. So I want to thank the school for that. I don't know who organized it, but Tucker, did you paint some jeans?
No, I'm also the senior class president and we are, we're the ones who actually plan the senior sunrises. So I know it's a success, but yeah, it was like a really big, like a lot of, I think we had a hundred something seniors show up to like go hang out on the football field and it's like meant to be like the sunrise on your senior year, so like it's the start of it. And then I think it's like the day before graduation, we do senior sunset. We do a similar outing where we watch the sunset on your senior year. Yeah, we plan, but I also, yeah, he's right, like big things that like get the community involved and like one thing, he would bring up our seniors too. I think a lot of seniors at our school were really good at like buying into like the senior experience. Everyone I've talked to is like, you know, like there's, I like how we stress like you only get nine more months, like make the most of it, you know what I mean? Like that you get to experience being in high school. And I think that's like something that we do good. At least at this high school, like senior involvement and seniors like realizing that it's like a short little fleeting amount of time that they get to experience TPS.
It's all a short fleeting amount of time. Senior, that never changes.
It's not just your senior year.
That feeling will stay. Yeah, it's gone by quickly.
Am I good? Ready for motion?
Senior class president, huh?
Yes.
So was I. You know what that does for you? Forty-five years after you graduate, you're planning a class reunion.
Evidently you also become school board president. Right. Just something to think about.
Yeah, you're on slow track. I don't know.
If it helps, I'm also National Honor Society president.
Yeah, wasn't that?
I don't know.
You had to be in it first.
I wear a lot of hats, so if you guys have a lot of questions, just ask me. Probably I do a lot.
We have a good resource.
Okay, this was a great meeting for, for good news. To, which way to start first? First of all, we were, Mr. Hilton's announcement, seven, top seven percent in the state of Michigan and that's based on our high school, but remember there are a lot of grades and teachers prior to them getting to high school to get them to that level. That speaks volumes because one of the things that was mentioned in the, that he mentioned the data that I despise, when they talk about they enter in the poverty level, the economic level of the district. I don't like that because I think it handicaps people. I grew up, we didn't have a whole lot and my sister and I both graduated from college, my kids went on to college. If you, if you don't hand someone a handicap, encourage them to go out, just go out and achieve and be what they are. And that's why I got to take my hats off to the staff, the leadership here, to the students that we have here, probably to link, link crew like Mrs. Musselman runs, to bring that sense of community here where we're, we're part of a team and we, we need to exploit this top seven percent. Because if this was an athletic team that just, if you went a regional, you're in the top twelve and a half percent and that's a big deal, right? And so.
We had two last year.
Regional, hey, regional might be top sixteen, I think it is. Okay, so not quite, it's the final eight, quarterfinals year in that, but still, we celebrate all that stuff. This is a bigger celebration because this isn't about a team that got picked. This is bringing everybody into this, everybody walks through that door, that door, comes in here and has an equal chance and we're to this point. And we need to make sure that we remember not just the teachers who do that, but the instructional assistants, because they're to me, and I said this when I was assistant principal and even interim superintendent, but nobody listens to you when you're that. When you, when you, those, those, those assistants are the lowest paid people on the staff doing the most difficult work and with a lot of times, some of the most difficult students. And, and we still continue to achieve at this district. We've done it here for years and it's, it's almost like, you know, Rudy or something like that where this, we, we overachieve consistently and I say we, I mean, I guess as a board, as a leadership, yeah, we're a little smidgen of that, but what goes on in these, in the buildings around here, you see the bad things on Facebook. But, but when you see this compilation right here that we just got delivered to us, that tells you about the big picture and how all those pieces are fitting together, they have to. The people sitting over here, the administrators who aren't here anymore for the meetings and I don't think they should be because they put in a zillion hours here in a week as it is and the teachers we have and all the staff, even the people we have, like, look at the buildings right now. I've been, you know, since nineteen ninety, eighty-nine, I've been an employee here, part time or full time and unfortunately, you guys can't get rid of me, but I've never seen buildings this clean except when this one was built. It's, or the, the middle school was renovated. I never wanted the elementaries much, I never worked there, but everything here is pointing to a positive way. I, I thank all of you who are here, Mr. Hilton, his staff, but I mean, what we're doing here is working, we just need to keep it working. We just have to stay out of our own way, keep guiding like we're doing, put our faith in the kids and it's just the old, if you listen to any good coach or leader, the first thing you do, you want to know how you have a great team? You have great players and we've got those right now. So let's embrace that and ride this thing because we're doing well. Thanks to everybody.
Standing ovation?
No.
Well said, Craig.
It's just a lot of good things all at once and it's, it's really refreshing. Oh, and after that tirade, I'll look for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and second to adjourn the meeting. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Did you say aye? No. We adjourned.
He's like, please.